...by the Holloway High School students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have a moment of silence, in the moment of silence if we all can remember the bombing in Boston and also the victims in the fertilizer plant of fire in Texas. So if we can just keep them in our thoughts and everything. Thank you. Approval of agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Approval of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holliday, second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, Mr. Odom.
Number six tonight is our spotlight on education. As the title said, is one of the best kept secrets in Rutherford County. But they're doing a great job with our high school students and Holloway High School. So I'm going to ask Ms. Sumatra Drayton if she'll come up. She is the principal at Holloway High School. And I've gotten a little preview of this and it's good.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Sumatra Drayton and I am the principal of the best kept secret in Rutherford County and the school where you get a private school education at a public school price. At Holloway, I want you to just see the movie, the video. And then after that I have some students that I'd like to introduce everyone to. We want to get the word out that Holloway is there and the service that Holloway provides for Rutherford County, which is to make sure our students graduate and are productive citizens. So with that being said, I'm going to let the video do the rest of the talking and then introduce some of our students and let them share. Hi, I'm Sumatra Drayton and I'm the principal of Holloway High, Rutherford County's only school of choice. I chose Holloway High School for multiple reasons. One being that it met the needs of students whose needs might not have been met in comprehensive high schools. Some students need to learn in an environment that is smaller. Holloway provides that. Some students may have children. Holloway provides a childcare for them. Holloway also provides a way for students to accelerate in their credits, graduate early. They also provide a way for students who are behind to catch up.
I came to Holloway High School to make a difference in young people's lives. And at Holloway, we're more than just a school, we're a family.
I came to Holloway because, well actually I'm a school counselor and I've been a school counselor for seven years now at bigger high schools. And I came to Holloway because it is a smaller school feel. And it's good for me as a counselor because I get to know my students a lot better. You know, I have a more personal relationship with students here and get to know all of them and what they want to do with their lives and where they want to go. And it's a lot easier for me as a counselor to keep up with that.
I chose Holloway High School because it's a smaller school and it's easier to navigate around the school and find all the classes.
I chose Holloway because it helps me graduate early and also I get to date here. It helps me sneak up more throughout the day.
I'm Danielle, my ACT score is 31 and I'm zoned for Oakland High School, but I chose to come to Holloway High School so I could get my credits faster and graduate early. And at Holloway High School, you get a private school education at a public school price.
I'm Daniella and I'm in the ninth grade. My zone school is Laverne High School. I chose Holloway High School because I want to graduate early because it's a good school to be.
Holloway made a difference.
My name is Tabitha and I chose Holloway because I was behind and wanted to graduate on time. And I knew that I wouldn't do great at a regular high school because I don't like being around a lot of people. So I chose to come to Holloway because it was smaller. I felt like it would be better for me to go.
Well, I chose to come to Holloway from some of the other high schools in Rutherford County because I wanted more freedom than the other schools offered. I had an excellent business education teacher and that's why I came back here to teach the business education program, which is now marketing. We do a fabulous job competing at our competitions and students here get to graduate early. That's one of the reasons that I came as a student and now I'm back as a teacher to really help those students out.
I chose to come here because it's easier to learn here. The teachers are more hands-on and that really makes a difference. Holloway High School changes lives.
Holloway is more than a school, it's a family. I'm graduating this May with a 4.0 HPTSU on a full ride scholarship. And I can honestly say it's thanks to all the help I've gotten here at Holloway. I've been in Spectrum since third grade. I've never had much trouble with school. It's just other things that I've gotten in my way. I've had to work since I was a freshman and here at Holloway, we don't start school until 8:30. That gives me a chance to sleep. When I get to school, if I need help with homework that I didn't get done with last night, teachers are there to help me. If I don't understand something, they have the time and they care enough to actually give me the help I need. The class, they're so small that they don't have a large student body to take care of and that helps. If you have a question, like I said, they can answer it. Everyone else is here to help you as well. The librarian is amazing. Even the prince, we can go to and ask for help. She sits next to each one of us. So if you have anything wrong with the school, you can go ahead and tell her. Like I said, it's one big family. Everyone's here to help you. Everyone's looking out for you.
Hi, my name is Nick Delham and I'm a senior here at Holloway. And my zone school is Blackman. My GPA is currently at 3.75. And the reason I came here was the smaller class sizes, the personal attention and to graduate early. Invest in a school that's going to invest in you. Come join us at Holloway High School.
Holloway High, where you get a private school education at a public school price. Thank you. I know that there's a million stories in Holloway. You saw a few. I brought a few more with me. And if you will allow these young people to just share with you what Holloway, why they chose Holloway High School, I'd appreciate it. Holloway High School in the community, a lot of people think it's an alternative school. And the thing that I want to get out is that we're not an alternative school, we're an accelerated school. We're an accelerated high school. Our students can complete almost two years if they work really hard with day school, night school, and even summer school. You could complete 12 credits in one year by attending Holloway. And that's what we want to make sure that the community knows, that Holloway is there to help students whether they're trying to catch up or get ahead for whatever reason. A lot of the kids that have come in this year are high achieving young moms or moms to be. And they want to graduate before the baby is born because they know that they may not be able to do it after the baby is born. So I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to invite my students. We can go in order, I guess, and just let them share a few words with you guys so you have a better picture of Holloway High School. And feel free to ask them any questions, they're prepared. I could have had 20 kids here. I had to stop, I had to cut it off, you know, and say, this is enough, you know, we can't take up the whole board meeting. So, all right. Come on up, Damon. I don't know if Abby wants to stand with him because I call Abby his wife. They're dating and they're usually a package deal. So Abby, come on. Because it wouldn't be the same if Abby wasn't standing up.
Hi, my name is Damon Tullis. My previous outlook on school is what has brought me to Holloway. I felt like graduating was an impossible challenge for the person I used to be. I was nervous and unsure on what I would be offered at Holloway High School. But from the first step I took into Holloway, I felt surrounded by family. The new administration has brought discipline and care for a loving, well-rounded atmosphere. I went from not caring about school to only wanting to learn more and educate myself further so that I may have a more successful life. Thank you for your time in making my high school your spotlight.
All right, next we got Bree. Bree Griffith. Come on, Bree. And Bree is truly impromptu because Bree was waiting for her mom this afternoon. And I said, Bree, I know Bree since she was little from church and you think your mom let you come with me? You know, so there you go, Bree. What is Holloway?
Holloway is a family to me. I came to Holloway because I came from an alternative school and I knew it was a small setting and I'm zoned for Laverne High, which is a very big school. And knowing that that big transition, I knew it wouldn't go well, so that's why I went to Holloway. And since then I've been successful. I've been able to join the basketball team for three years. We did pretty good and I just want to thank them for helping me get through my struggles. When I need help, they're there. And I just want to thank them. Thank you.
This is Lindsay, what we call our Toki at school.
Yeah.
Okay.
I haven't written like a paper or anything. I'm not like that great of a speaker, so excuse me. But when we say that our high school is more like a family than a school, I mean it. It really is. Like you can go and you never have to worry that if you mess up or if you're behind, that you're not going to have a chance to fix that. They're always, you know, the teachers, the principal, everything, it's really open. You know, if you need to talk about something, if you need help, if you're really struggling, you're going to get the help that you need. And honestly, if it wasn't for Holloway, I probably would no longer, I probably wouldn't be anywhere close to graduating than I am now. I'll be able to graduate in December, but if it wasn't for my school, I wouldn't be graduating at all. So I thank Holloway.
And Ms. Drayton, thank you.
And I thank Toki because we've come a long way. Toki did not always feel that way about me. I can tell you that, but Toki is very smart, as you can tell, very articulate young lady. And I'm expecting really great things to come from Toki. And I want to thank her aunt, Ms. Juanita, for bringing her today. Because again, that was pretty short notice, but these people feel very adamantly about Holloway High School, so. I'm going to go to Celia and Daniella together with Genesis.
Ms. Drayton, what is your graduation rate?
Last year, our graduation rate was something like 75, 76 percent. The year previous, it was high 80s, maybe 90. We're expecting a rebound this year.
Correct.
So.
What catches a lot of those is the four years and one summer when they switch back from that. So that's not necessarily a true picture. It's people that may not have finished at all but are actually graduating.
Right.
Hi, my name is Selena and this is my daughter, Genesis. Holloway's bring me a long way. Ms. Tucker, which is a childcare teacher, she's helped me a lot. She's took care of my daughter. If I need anything or just need somebody to hear me out, they're always there to listen. They give me advice. I mean, they're, that's my second home, my second family. Ms. Drayton, she's great. She's great with all of us. And that's my sister. She, there's three of us. My other sister's not here, but we're all, we're always together. So I love coming to Holloway and I graduate this year and I'm ready. I'm ready. But Holloway is a really great school and I hope my little brother gets to come too. He'll be coming to high school too. Tell him how great it is, but I love Holloway.
Danielle?
I chose Holloway to graduate early and just because it's smaller and I've been having problems with my other schools with that. They just don't give me the attention that I need or the help. And Holloway has gave that to me. So it made a big difference with my work and it just helped me to be caught up.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I think we have one left, our valedictorian. Drew, would you come on up? Just giving Drew a hard time.
I didn't really choose Holloway. Holloway chose me. I came to the school because I dropped out of school and I was working full-time because I was, had to move out at 16. And I was doing homeschool and working full-time. And they had a basketball program that I was interested in. And I got there and met Ms. Drayton and they said I couldn't play basketball unless I went to school there. So I went to school there and absolutely love it. I'm graduating 367 days in advance. I didn't think I was going to graduate at all. I'm going to MTSU on a full ride scholarship plus some. And I must say that is because of Holloway. And I thank the administration and the students. And when they say it's a family, they mean it. You know everyone in the school. Anything you need, they're there for you. And it's truly made a difference in my life and I appreciate them very much.
So as you can see, Holloway is a unique setting. Drew was that when he came in the door, it was the middle of the day and he said he wanted an application to go to our school. And I was like, well, why aren't you in school and where are you supposed to be in? You know, I just started that list. And then I asked him, well, what's your grades like? He said, they're good. I was like, yeah, that's what they all say when they come in here, they're good. And then I pulled him up on the computer and I was like, ooh, man. This kid's spectrum. This kid has all A's. The lowest grade he's ever made is a 92? Ooh, thank you, Lord. Where did that come from? You know? And as much as we've been a blessing to him, he's helped us out a lot. He's tutoring, he's doing things to help out the school and he's being, he's being rewarded and blessed in return. He just found out he is a bootstrap recipient, award recipient for Tennessee. You know, he is on a full ride. He with MTSU. Mr. McPhee has my cell phone number because, Dr. McPhee, because he is mentoring him personally. You know, so it has opened doors for him as well as help does us. So if you get a chance to tell anybody anything about Holloway, please, now you can tell them that it is the best kept secret and send all of your, you know, friends or anyone looking for that private school, family, accelerated curriculum to Holloway. Thank you.
Ms. Drayton, I'd like to basically tell you, I appreciate the job you're doing there and appreciate you bringing the students tonight. To each one of you, I'd like to congratulate each one of you on the success you're having and wish you the best. And I'm pretty well safe in saying that I think every board member here is proud of each other. So, good luck. You got anything, Mr. Odom?
I think the best kept secret's out, don't you?
Number seven. I'd like to welcome all our visitors tonight. We've got several, I think there's six, six people that want to speak. If you could, when I call your name, come up to the microphone, you know, announce your name and where you live, if you don't mind doing that. Mr. Evans over here controls the three-minute clock, so when the clock goes off, we ask you to wind it up if you don't mind. You're controlling, okay. First visitor we got tonight, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name, is Scott Cosmore.
Mr. Odom, board members, and all the community, thank you for giving me a chance to talk real quick. My name is Scott Cosmore. I've been a Rutherford County resident for approximately 15 years. Prior to that, 10 years in Williamson County. I have five children, four children that are currently in Rutherford County public schools, okay? Wide range in age, don't need to know. This is a difficult topic for me because I've just been doing a lot of research lately. But on October 19th, 1979, the Department of Education was initiated. I think everybody knows that here. Despite decades of increased regulation, federal education spending, academic achievement in the United States lags. I think Ms. Drayton proves my point. We have to have those relationships in those schools. We have to invest in these kids. I've been a coach for over 25 years, volunteer. I'm coaching today. And what I see happening right now in our schools is troubling to me. I'm very thankful for the teachers. My kids have wonderful teachers, I'm very thankful for that. But since coming into the office, the Obama administration has been intent on equality and fairness. And I'm all about equality and fairness. But this includes standardizing what is taught at each grade level in all of the nation's schools. It's kind of like painting with a broad brush across everybody. And to me, that necessary, that's, I think takes away a lot of the power of even a Holloway, right? Holloway is the ones that, there's doing things outside the box, right? The small schools and the more regulation you put on these schools, the harder it is for them to think outside the box. Anyway, it has used its flagship race to the top competitive grant program to entice states to adopt this K through 12 standards developed by the Joint Project of the NGA, National Governors Association. I'm sure you all are familiar with this. You may or may not be familiar with this. And the Council of Chief State School Officers. It has also been suggested that the 2009 blueprint for education reform, that adoption of these common standards could one day be qualification for states wanting funds, our funds. So Washington DC is in effect saying, you have to teach this way and you won't get your money unless you teach this way. Right? And so we're talking about Common Core right now. Parents, teachers, education leaders along the whole political spectrum are increasingly raising questions about the constitutionality and the transparency of this project. I haven't interacted a lot with the school board members. Don, I haven't talked to you about this specifically, but I think the trans, you all, you all obviously serve the community and you're our eyes and ears and we have to trust you with our children, right? And it's important to me that the transparency comes not only through the federal government, but through our school board. Five, 30 seconds, oh, four seconds. All right, so Common Core to me is a step backwards. English standards, math standards, cost implement, train, maintain are all money we don't have. We just don't have that today. Last thing. Well, I'll cut it short then. Common Core, Common Core in my opinion is a power grab by Washington for my children. All right. One more sentence? All right, okay. Parents engaged and good teachers taught, that's what to me is where we're going to succeed as a society.
Next up, we have Ms. Lisa Moore.
Good evening, this microphone again. Mr. Odom and school board members. First of all, I want to take a moment, Lisa Moore from Christianity, Tennessee. Saw me at the last board meeting. I want to take a moment, first of all, to thank Mr. Odom and Mr. Zagat for taking the time to meet with us yesterday and continue the discussion about the concerns that I had brought before the board, the last board meeting. I do truly appreciate that you invested the time in researching what I felt and what a lot of people feel like were very untruthful and is offensive Islamic handouts, where they came from, and I appreciate your following up with the middle school principals like you did. These were certainly good steps in the right direction, yet I think, I do believe there's still a lot of unanswered questions on how to truly resolve this issue and how to move forward from here. As I indicated to you yesterday, Mr. Odom, and we discussed a course that these issues are only going to continue to get worse, they're not going to get better. And after researching, Mr. Zagat was kind enough to provide us with the website from where these handouts came from and I appreciated that. After doing a little investigating or digging into that website last night, I found that it's actually an individual mother's blog that was tied to this website. And I realized that this mother had actually simply pulled these handouts off of some website out of the UK. We don't even want to talk about what's happened to the UK in the arena of Islamic influence and indoctrination. But I do believe all of this now begs the question as to why our teachers were allowed to utilize resources and pull handouts for uses in their class, especially on a subject like this, that weren't vetted by the school system in either fact or truth, or even just simple consistency really within our school system. Mr. Odom, I understand from our meeting yesterday that you had expressed that the board members might be offended because of the disruption that occurred at the last meeting. Also by my follow-up letter that I wrote, asking why my requests had not been responded to. I do understand, although I've never been one, that being a public official is a tough spot to be in. You've got to develop a thick skin and realize that there's always going to be opposition and there's also going to be press that's not going to be in your favor or polite. It's unfortunate if any of you fell offended by what happened at the meeting or by my letter. However, I have apologized for that several times, even when I had no control over anyone else's behavior. I am extremely disappointed that the board has shown no remorse or concern, much less an apology, over the discomfort that I was subjected to in that first meeting by sending your attorney over to tell me that I could not speak the requested 15 minutes. No explanation as to why and even sent, he came back over two times and then, or a second time and then a third time with another attorney. It made me feel bullied and oppressed and that's not a good way to start a communicative and cooperative relationship.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next we have Ms. Tammy Behrens. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Good afternoon, it's Behrens, Tammy Behrens. I am a mother of a sixth grade student in Rutherford County. I moved from Davidson County to Rutherford County because of the schools. And my son is in sixth grade. Imagine my horror when I was working with him on his homework, when he told me that one of his teachers told us when they were studying Islam that we worship the same God as Islam. Now, many of y'all know about the handouts that came out? That's the problem with some of this, letting this in our classrooms. Because it's not structured, it's misinformation. I would rather nothing be in their books. I would rather nothing about Islam, nothing about Christianity be in our books. That's what my duty as a parent to teach my son what religion I want him to grow up in. Imagine my even more horror when he's a mom. There were several students in the classroom that wanted to say, you know, that's not the truth, but they were scared that their teacher was going to yell at them. And I dare say that if it were any other religion than Christianity, the outcome probably would have been different. It probably would have been on the front page news. We're here parents, we're parents and grandparents, we love our children. You guys have children, you wouldn't be in the school system if you didn't care for children. We believe that wholeheartedly. We believe that wholeheartedly. We're here to help you. We realize things come down from the top. We all work in the world, we, we know things come down from the top that we have no control over. I've been in banking for almost twenty years. It's not for weenies anymore. Please allow us to help you. We're here to help you, we're here to partner with you, because it really is, in the end of it, it is about the kids. There's probably not a parent in this classroom, I haven't taken a survey, but there's not a parent in here that probably wouldn't pay for their kids' own school books. We don't want the indoctrination, and we know that you guys don't have any control, we know that the, the school books are chosen elsewhere, but our country, our kids' future and our country depends on this.
Yes, amen.
And thank you, thank you. We realize that we're passionate about this, but we realize it's now or never. It's now or never. Please allow us to help you. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Nicole Jennings.
Good evening, Mr. Odom and the school board members. I would also like to thank Mr. Odom and Mr. Zagat for meeting with us yesterday. I want to say how much I appreciate Mr. Zagat's investigation on the handouts and answering the majority of our questions. We really do appreciate it, and we really did enjoy the meeting yesterday. Thank you. This brings me to the subject that I would like to address to the board regarding the importance of communication. We contacted Mr. Odom about our concerns regarding, regarding the sixth-grade World History textbook back in December, where there was a meeting with two representatives of our organization, Mr. Odom and Mr. Zagat. On January seventeenth, I personally emailed each school board member with our findings in the textbook, with the expect, with the exception of Mr. Tackett, because I had knowledge that two members of PTE had already contacted him regarding our concerns. On January twenty-first, Mr. Holliday was the only board member to respond to my email with some sort of concern about what we had found. At the February seventh school board meeting, I handed three school board members a written report of our findings with the textbook. At this point, after all these attempts to communicate, myself and the members of our organization sat back and waited for a response from Mr. Odom and the board. Finally, after not hearing back, we decided to go public with the information at the March fourteenth school board meeting, where, yes, emotions were running very high, and I regret, I regret that things did indeed get out of control. Here's my question for you. What could our organization have done better to try and communicate with you? I sincerely mean that question. It is very frustrating when we, as your constituents, try to reach out to you and we never hear back. It leaves all sorts of room for speculation and misunderstandings. I want to make sure that this does not happen again, and despite what you may think after the March fourteenth board meeting, we do not demonize you. We don't. And, and you would like, and we would like every opportunity to continue to work with you and keep the lines of communication open. I ask, as we move forward, that you do not demonize us as well. Yes, our organization is Parents for Truth in Education, but that, at the end of the day, we are no more than a group of moms and dads, grandparents, aunts and uncles, who are genuinely concerned with our children's education. Together, and as our organization continues to grow, we have pledged to hold each other accountable for taking our parental responsibility back in guarding our children's education, because the future of our country is depending upon it. Thank you for your time and for your attention.
Next, we have Mr. Don Westcott.
Thank you, Don Westcott Smyrna. My grandson enters public school next year. Common Core is a bad idea. Test scores are actually lower in the schools that have been used. Algebra is deferred from eighth grade to ninth grade. Math skills and division are deferred from fourth to sixth grade. It does not promote diversity, it is not multicultural. Standards are so wordy, it's hard to understand. This is not my opinion. The following national educators are against Common Core. James Milgram of Sanford. He was on the original committee for Common Core, in the validation committee. He is against it now. Morgan Polikoff, University of Southern California. Andrew Porter, University of Pennsylvania, School of Education. Zev Werner, Fordham Institute. The Brookings Institute is actively opposing Common Core. The National Council of Teachers of English opposed it. The obstruction, evasion, and dismissal by this board regarding public school curriculum in Common Core or anything regarding Islam, it leads me to one of three conclusions about the board. Either the board is complicit with the Islamic community to slowly bring Sharia into public education. Two, the members of this board, despite their credentials and intelligence and all kinds of letters behind their name, are refusing to look at what Muhammad says about Islam. Not what Muslims say, but what Muhammad says. They have to go by what he says, not what another believer does. Or the, the board is cooperating with Islamic propaganda because they are coerced, either by threats of property damage or to your family. I don't know which one it is, but if it's the last one, then Sheriff Arnold or the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation needs to be notified. Any one of these conclusions puts our kids in danger, loss of truth in history and loss, excuse me, loss of critical thinking required in a healthy democratic society. At best, Common Core is a half-truth, and at worst, it is Islamic propaganda to promote Muhammad. Muhammad's goal is total conquest of the world, it's always has been, politically, economically, militarily, culturally, and even scholastically. It's not my, this is not my opinion, it's what Muhammad has said, not me. He wants to go against anything that opposes Islam. And peaceful Muslims are merely fans in a stadium cheering on their jihadist counterparts in the field of trying to win the game of life. Passive Muslims can be coerced by, into jihad by more devout believers. Look what happened in Boston. The older brother coerced the younger. Quiet devout Muslims are taught by Muhammad to remain below the radar, quiet, until more power is established in the schools and in, in politics, then they will have their way with the rest of the population. Common Core, CSKO, the Gulen Charter schools are, are nothing but Islamic propaganda. Thank you.
Last, we have Mr. George Earl.
I'm George Ardell of Cherry Lane Acres. Ladies, gentlemen, in the late seventies, the federal government established Department of Education. I graduated nineteen seventy-two. When I went to school, I had teachers that cared much more than we do today. We have some good ones, like we saw demonstrated here a while ago. But since the Department of Education has been taken, established in Washington and controlled by its tentacles reached down to the state and local level, we see policemen in high schools now, in all schools now, armed policemen. We have metal detectors in some schools. The graduation rate has declined. Illiteracy is on the increase of people getting graduation certificates, their diplomas. This is a local school board. You're supposed to do things in the local light with what the local people want to do. By you taking what's given to you by Washington, this Common Core nonsense, you're being derelict in your duties, absolutely derelict. And like this gentleman said, I don't care about the letters behind your names, I don't care how much college you have, what you have demonstrated as a board is a woeful ignorance, a woeful ignorance of the subject of Islam. You want to learn what Islam is? Here's a book for you to find out and read. I will be glad to buy each and every one of you a copy of this book, Reliance of the Traveler. This is the authority on Islam to the Islamist that's out here today. This tells him how they're going to pray, how they wash their feet, in between each toe in a sequential order before they pray. This tells how they're going, oh, if they want to beat their wife, this tells them the proper way to beat their wife. And you're allowing a curriculum to be accepted into our system, ladies and gentlemen, which is going to infiltrate and put this stuff into our kids' heads as though it's nothing. You've heard the testimony? It's, it's taught as something that it is not. Now, you're going to talk later about a book up here, I saw it in yesterday's meeting, a, a class called The Bible and Its Influence on, or something to that effect, it's an elective. Is that a morsel you're trying to throw us? Oh, well, they're going to have a book about the Bible in there. I'm sure they're not going to treat the Bible in the same way as they're bowing and kissing the feet of Islam. You folks, each and every dang one of you, I challenge you, if you've got any gonads at all, get a book. There's a book, Infiltration, he has. Infiltration is about complete. This tells a lot about the evils of Islam, and if you want to see it right from the Imam's mouth, get some, get some gonads, folks, buy this book, and do some study to bring yourself up to speed on a subject which you have shown your ignorance about.
Before we go on, I know a lot of people want some responses. I think we discussed at the last board meeting of the fourteenth, the board asked Mr. Odom to do some research, and we'll, most of you know it's on the agenda tonight. I think it's item number fifteen, what Mr. Odom is going to cover on that, is to hopefully answer a lot of questions. And at that time, I'm going to also ask Mr. Odom to address Common Core, if you don't, if you don't mind. As far as the board members, when we have general discussion, you can open it up and ask any questions, answer any questions you want to. I think that's the best way, just try to keep, keep things in order right now. Number eight, Mr. Odom.
Number eight is proposed insurance change for pre-sixty-five retirees. At the April seventeenth, two thousand thirteen budget meeting, the Rutherford County School Board received an update on possible medical insurance rates beginning January first, two thousand fourteen. The board members expressed grave concerns about the fifty percent proposed rate increase for pre-sixty-five retirees. Mr. Sandvik explained that the pre-sixty-five retired group has had two years in a row where the necessary increases to fully fund this group has been over one hundred percent. He also explained that the insurance committee and staff are very concerned about the impact of higher rates on this group. The January two thousand thirteen increase was held at twenty percent, and fifty percent will be presented to the insurance committee. In addition to the issue of the cost to the pre-sixty-five retirees, Mr. Wayne Blair expressed concerns that this group of one hundred and sixty-six people is not large enough to have a equitable enrollment. The school board asked if we could combine the pre-sixty-five retirees with our active employee base, but still charge the pre-sixty-five retirees fifty percent of insurance cost of this larger group. The motion is, a recommended motion to approve to request the insurance committee and Rutherford County Commission Budget Committee to prepare a two thousand fourteen medical insurance rate proposal that will combine the pre-sixty-five retirees and the active employee group and set a common overall rate for both groups, with the pre-sixty-five retirees paying one half of this overall rate.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I've had two conversations with our risk management director for the county, and she shared a lot of the numbers with me, and, and I understand some of the issues that they're dealing with, but what I feel like this does is put this back on the table for the insurance committee to find an opportunity to, to help our pre-sixty-five retirees. They've given anywhere from thirty to forty-plus years of service to, to our school system and to our children, our students, and this, this gives it an opportunity, gives us an opportunity to help them. If this is not a solution, maybe there's, there's another solution. And, and it puts it back on the table to, to talk about, because it's a recommendation on.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, since I'm directly making my decision, I will not be voting on this issue.
Okay. Mr. Holliday, I'm sorry.
The, I was just going to mention, the, the matter certainly is of great concern because of the extreme increase, and I echo what Mr. Blair just said, that, you know, what the solution is, is yet to be determined, but this absolutely puts it back into discussion, and hopefully it will be received in that way.
Anybody else? We've got the motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Holliday. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You give Mr. Tackett, Ms. Michaels. That's standing, okay. Number nine.
Number nine is partner with Better World Books. The Instruction Department is requesting permission to partner with Better World Books to dispose of our used library books. Better World Books handles all aspects of inventorying, marketing, selling, and shipping. Rutherford County Board of Education receives a commission or Ingram credit, and Ingram is a company where we get typically more library books or textbooks and that sort of thing in Nashville. Any books deemed unsalable are donated to their literacy partners or recycled. In partnership with libraries and colleges, Better World Books has raised over ten million for libraries and literacy partners and recycled over sixty-seven million books. Recommend approval, motion to partner with Better World Books for the disposal of our used library books.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday, a second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten.
Number ten is textbook adoption report ED fifty ninety-nine and textbook certificate of adoption report ED twenty-one fifty-three. School systems are required to submit textbook adoptions annually on forms provided by the Tennessee Department of Education. All textbooks are adopted on a six-year cycle. The local textbook adoption report shows newly adopted textbooks for two thousand thirteen, and the textbook adoption includes reading, elementary reading R one through six. We rec, the motion is recommend approval, motion to approve the textbook adoption report ED fifty ninety-nine and certificate of adoption report ED twenty-one fifty-three as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair, a second by Mr. Nipper. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven.
Number eleven is textbook report for kindergarten readiness reading adoption. The recommendation is Houghton Mifflin Splash, and to pre-K program kit costs two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars per teacher. Currently, there are seventeen teachers teaching kindergarten readiness in Rutherford County schools. The recommended approval, a motion is to approve pre-K program kits as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Holliday, a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve.
Number twelve is textbook adoption for a book not on the state list, this is Form ED fifty-one ninety-six, and local adoption of textbooks not on contract. The Instruction Department is requesting approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract in the rules, regulations, and minimum standards for which no textbook is included in the official list of textbooks under section one point zero two, program selection. Recommended approval, motion for Rutherford County to request approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract in the rules, regulations, and minimum standards for which no textbook is included in the official list of textbooks under section one point oh two, program selection, following the books to be adopted for the next six years. The first book there is an AP Spanish Literature and Culture. The second book there is AP French Language and Culture, and the third one, The Bible and Its Influence, and that is also being recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Nipper and a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen.
Number thirteen is under Facilities, Eagleville High School City Sewer Connection. Director of Schools, Mr. Don Odom, has received a letter from Eagleville Mayor Sam Tune, requesting an impact connection fee of seventy thousand dollars and a monthly billing of four thousand dollars. The fee and the monthly billing is equivalent to billing and fee paid at other school locations. Rutherford County Schools Construction and Engineering Department is also working with Jamie Reed at Site Engineering, the design engineer for the project to install a pile the design engineer for the project to install a pipe from the new plant back to the sports complex at Eagleville High School so repurified water can be used to irrigate the sports complex, creating water savings. The funds for the impact fee in the construction of Eagleville High School to prep for the new system connection will be included in the two thousand thirteen fourteen capital improvements budget and estimated at two hundred and fifty thousand. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve City of Eagle Sewer Impact Connection Fee and Monthly Billing as Presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair, a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Holliday.
I believe this is probably one of the first indications that we see of the Eagleville Sewer Project. And I know we've discussed in previous board meetings the impact that we expect that could have on the Eagleville community. And I think it's appropriate for us to highlight the increased population, the fact that Eagleville is our one K through twelve school. It's a very unique environment. But in the coming years, we certainly anticipate that additional development in the area brought on by the sewer will likely require us to make capital investment there as well, perhaps with a second school.
Well, in phase one, it's still, it's on our two-year building plan. And the mayor there has been contacted by a number of businesses that would like to locate once that sewer is installed. So I certainly foresee their tax base increasing and residential property also increasing too. Quite a bit of property been annexed by the town here in the recent months. So it's growing exponentially.
Anybody else? I guess a question. I've got, Mr. Clardy, on this repurified water. I should have asked you last night. How much savings do you think that is?
Well, it will be, I don't know about that particular location, but I know at Segal, for instance, sometimes in the hottest part of the year over there, we're saving nine or ten thousand dollars a month.
How much?
Nine or ten thousand dollars a month.
Wow.
That's also doing away with your sewer cost too, I guess, isn't it?
Yes. You don't have the sewer cost. That's one of the greatest costs attached to irrigation water is the percentage of sewer that they put on that. That runs the bill up quite a bit.
You might, a lot of people here may not know what we're talking about and how it's used. Can you give us a minute, a summary of what we're talking about?
On repurified water? Repurified water is the treated wastewater that is normally released into the streams and go back out into the system. It's sterile. It has the odor of chlorox. And it's also high in ammonia. So the state only allows so much to be dumped back into the streams. So as the growth in municipalities increase and things grow, they're faced with an issue of getting ready, getting rid of this repurified water because their permit only allows them to dump so much back in the stream. So it is safe. It's not potable. In other words, you can't drink it. But you can use it for irrigation and any type of farming or that type of stuff. And so they basically want to get rid of it so they don't charge you anything for it. Very little for it, maybe a penny a gallon or something like that. And/or twenty-five cents for a thousand gallons or something. Just a little bit of handling fee. So it's safe. We're doing it at Segal. That was our first school. We're looking to try to pull some other schools in it as the systems and municipalities grow.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Clardy. We had a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Young. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, big.
This is Energy Management Grant Proposal. The Energy Efficient School Council, EESC, has allocated one hundred and sixty-seven thousand and sixty dollars to Rutherford County schools to establish an ongoing energy management program. The four minimum criteria are, one, the board adopted an energy management conservation policy that includes protection of indoor environmental quality. Two, establishing a baseline of at least one year of historical utility data and benchmarking utility data on Energy Star Portfolio Manager for a number of schools that will account for at least fifty percent of the total square footage. The district total now is approximately eight million square feet. Conduct ASHRAE Level One audits and CEM or BEAP on a number of schools that will account for at least ten percent of the total square footage and establish an energy action plan that identifies roles and responsibilities, including an energy management advocate for the district. Rutherford County Schools propose to use the grant to fulfill these minimum requirements and with the remaining grant allocation, demonstrate their ability to collect and organize real-time energy and facility data in use-by software to provide intelligence to an energy manager positioned hired by Rutherford County Schools that result in measurable energy efficiencies. This energy management system in the first year of the energy manager salary will be submitted for reimbursement under the grant. Rutherford County Schools will also receive training under the grant, including training on four building surveys to review operation and maintenance of mechanical systems and controls, training in the energy management intelligence software, training in understanding the ASHRAE audits, and training to understand ROI of energy conservation activities. Rutherford County Schools has selected the professional services of Mechanical Resource Group under this grant. One Graham General Manager Energy Services Mechanical Resource Group, LLC, is here to go over the proposal in detail with the Rutherford County School Board. Ultimately, the motion, the recommended approval, the motion will be to approve the proposal from Mechanical Resource Group to help apply and qualify for EESC grant of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand and sixty dollars, with sixty-four thousand nine hundred and eighteen going to hire an energy manager for the first year. The future salary for the energy manager will come from utility savings. Mr. Clardy, I'll let you introduce and all. Rutherford County has tried to be very green with our metal roofs now, geothermal in all of the buildings. We've installed light sensing to reduce lighting when somebody walks out of a classroom, and also water conservation all over, even at our existing schools. So this is our next step to try to continue to save taxpayer money with energy efficiency.
This is the next logical step, and we kind of look at this as an energy-saving snowball where we will hopefully save money. And as we save that money, reinvest it and save more money. So I mainly wanted Mr. Graham to come tonight so you can get familiar with him. We'll be working closely with him over the next few years to try to help us solve the energy problems. And Ron was the executive director of the Energy Efficiency School Council, which I sit on now. So with that, I want to bring Ron up, and we're going to. He briefly is going to give you a brief overview of this. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask him.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to address any questions you have. I did retire from the state after thirty years, and my last appointment was to the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative to help all the districts of the state increase energy efficiency. One of the important aspects of this is to improve your environmental indoor quality. That's paramount, that your schools are comfortable and safe and healthy for your students, teachers, faculty, et cetera. And secondary is to save energy where we can. It's important that we take this step. These grant dollars are here. I didn't choose Holloway, but I chose Rutherford County as the first school district to come help. And I welcome any questions you may have about this grant.
What's a typical savings? I guess over a period of time, a year or two years?
Yeah, looking at, you've probably got about a twelve million dollar budget. You know, one of the aspects of this is to go in with the audits and collect data and establish baselines and benchmark your facilities. But you're going to save at least three or four percent, you know, without me even guaranteeing anything. And we've got, Mechanical Resource Group has PEs and commissioning agents and lead certified specialists. And we're going to actually come in and do some mechanical equipment evaluations on top of this to really get an idea about exactly how much we can save. I expect it's going to be much more than that, but it's definitely going to be paying for this energy manager position and improving the facilities in Rutherford County.
Do you generally have a lot of capital outlay? Do you generally have a lot of capital outlay when you do this?
Yes, sir. Our whole company is committed to this. I'm the general manager of Energy Services, but I've got, you know, a whole team of engineers and mechanical experts behind me.
Is one of the primary savings opportunities trying to keep from our facilities hitting peak demand? Is that one of the primary?
Right. So collecting this real-time data, we can actually do trend analysis and evaluate exactly when these peak periods are happening, what's going on with the facilities, what's turning on, what's, you know, and then try to reduce those peak periods by the way we operate the HVAC systems.
I mean, is that the primary function, or will there be other?
It's included. You know, it'll be all about, you know, scheduling, unoccupied, occupied periods, how the mechanical equipment is operating and sequencing together, different opportunities for particular pieces of equipment to be installed, like variable frequency drives. There'll be opportunities to evaluate, you know, no-cost, low-cost alternatives, how the building envelope is secure. You know, we look at lighting, we look at, you know, mechanical equipment, even kitchen equipment, how the custodial staffs operate the facility, how outside groups are coming in to use the facility. There's a lot of aspects to this. And your energy manager will be a big advocate. It's really, you know, having a champion too within the district. You know, Williamson County has the energy manager now, and you know, Hamilton County, City of Memphis, Knox County, and everywhere where there's somebody championing an effort like this, it really gains ground, and that's where you get a lot of the savings. So it's important.
Will the first year just be a baseline, or will you immediately start tweaking the system?
Yeah, we'll establish a year past of baseline data, immediately go in with audits and building surveys to try to immediately identify low-cost, no-cost alternatives. It may be operation and maintenance opportunities that we identify right off the bat that can be immediately implemented. We'll look at forming an energy action plan that'll move you forward. One of the important steps about this first step is, our first step was to put a lot of capital equipment into the school districts. And once you kind of got your grant, you were through. This time, once you get this grant and get these baselines established and benchmark yourself, I've got five, well, my former position, I've got five hundred thousand dollars a month coming back in from the loans that were made in this program. And there's some money that we want to access as soon as possible. So we want to move you through this minimum requirement first.
This is kind of a next phase of what we've already started with occupancy lighting switches and low-flow plumbing fixtures. You know, we've taken kind of the low-hanging fruit of energy savings already. And this is really getting into the, you know, technical tuning of our engine.
Exactly. We call it commissioning a lot of times. It's kind of like tuning your car up, you know, making sure that the oil's changed, the filters are changed.
And there's really no way to do this without that, no effective way to do this without that energy person on staff as well to help us to monitor it, really on a daily basis.
Right. Monitor that real-time data. You know, one of my clients is Vanderbilt right now, and they're getting this real-time data, and it's allowing them to see the immediate impacts of these changes that they're making.
Excellent.
You kind of hit the nail on the head there.
Will the concentration be more on the older schools? Because we have so many that we have built recently. We have a brand-new comprehensive high school going online here first of August. And it will already have state-of-the-art equipment. Will those already be calibrated?
Right. We'll go collect data from all the schools. But then, as far as our, some of our targeted audits and building surveys, I'll be working with Gary to identify exactly what schools we need to go into first and start that evaluation.
Let me just briefly say that probably, starting off, we will use some of the newer schools, and we'll be tweaking the equipment, as he had mentioned, to try to reduce that peak and unoccupied times, all those kinds of things, because they already have all of the data systems in them other than the metering, where we can tell how much power is actually coming in. So we'll take those and try to tweak those up and save money so money will be available to go in some of these older schools and put systems in so we can keep an eye on them.
Sure.
Mr. Clardy, since you stepped back up there, I'll go back to tomorrow, or last night, when, I can't remember which board member kind of put you on the spot. We were anticipating that this comprehensive program, when we pressed you last night, you said could see annual savings, one hundred and fifty to potentially maybe even two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year.
Yes, that's on the inter-knock, peak-demand energy use.
So you've already saved us, you know, eight to ten thousand dollars in water at Eagleville High School. Now another one hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand. You know, I think you're doing a pretty good job.
Well, I appreciate that. But we are, we've got a good team of people in my department. Everyone's conscious. And I've got two people who are becoming certified by ASHRAE. At this time, we're sending them to twelve months of school, once a month. They're doing projects in between, so they'll be helping out with that. And we're just, we just want to get all the savings that we can get off the system. It's a shame to just let it sit there and burn energy without good reason.
Very good.
Anybody else? Mr. Odom, if you would, read your motion again.
The motion is to approve the proposal from Mechanical Resource Group to help apply and qualify for the EESC grant of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand and sixty dollars, with sixty-four thousand nine hundred and eighteen going to hire an energy manager for the first year. The future salary for the energy manager will come from utility savings.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dicker, motion, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, we talked about that last night. That was information only. Mr. Tackett?
Yeah, let me go ahead. I followed up on that, and what was the question? Was from a coach, a middle school coach bowling at the middle school level, and it's not there. So I would like for us, whatever is appropriate, whatever Mr. Odom think would be the appropriate way to meet with maybe a middle school principal or two, a high school principal or two, a board member or two, just to review so that rather than come and say, this is one position that needs to be addressed, and then have somebody else, well, if that's been addressed, to hear them all, look at them all, decide if there's any amendments that need to be made to it at some point in time, and report back at a later board meeting. That's what I propose to suggest we do.
Mr. Blair?
You know, since there's not the negotiation that we've had in the past, this is kind of something that has fallen a little bit off the radar screen, I would believe. Are there some other issues out there that we have talked about in the past that may not be on the radar screen because we're not negotiating?
They do collaborative conferencing. They do meet together. They've done that several times this year. And those issues, the teacher group will bring up the issues. Some will have some issues to bring up. I think what Mr. Tackett stands specifically about this, and we'll get some principals together and see, are there a particular athletics that we're not addressing? It should be, we have enough student participation in that. And look at the rates, the supplemented rates, that sort of thing. And then come back to you with a report and see what we might be able to do with the board.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Number fifteen.
Number fifteen is student discipline appeal. The board has been asked to review the decision of the disciplinary hearing authority, DHA, to uphold the remandment of a student from Oakland High School to Daniel McKee Alternative School. This review is pursuant to the provisions of Policy six point three one seven. The policy states that the board shall review the record and shall, one, affirm the decision of the DHA or modify the decision to a lesser penalty or grant a second hearing, which will be before the board, or deny request for a board hearing.
Move to affirm the decision of the DHA.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 16.
Number 16 is follow-up report requested at the March 14, 2013 board meeting. Mr. Holliday asked us, after the report by Ms. Moore and all, that we would look into this and try to find the source of these. So I've asked our Assistant Superintendent, Richard Zago, who's over curriculum instruction, he'll be doing a presentation tonight, the follow-up of what he found in his research. The second part of it, basically, will be with what we know so far about Common Core. Tennessee has signed on to Common Core, which kind of reduces much of our discretionary, the thing that we want to make, and I'm sure Mr. Zago would say this too, Common Core is standard, it is not the curriculum. So we need to try to separate the two as much as we can. Mr. Zago.
Yes, sir. As you've already heard tonight, Ms. Moore and some others had spoke on March 14, and some of the board members wanted us to come back and report to them after we had spoken with them yesterday. Mr. Odom and I spoke with Ms. Jennings and Ms. Moore for about an hour and a half, answered some of the questions. They actually posed some more questions. We'll be answering those pretty soon. I should have some answers for that sometime later this week. What you have here on the first page, and guys, I'm not going to read this to you, I don't think you want me to do that. One of the questions was, where did that, the handouts come from? The supplemental materials that was presented by Ms. Moore on the March 14 date, they were materials from one teacher, and they came from the website you see there. I'm sorry, go back. We feel flip back. The middle-school principals, and one of the questions that's been posed, and actually posed by Ms. Moore and Ms. Jennings yesterday, and I wanted to let you guys know, the middle-school principals met with Mr. Odom and I during a middle-school principals' meeting, and we make sure that we ask them to follow that Rutherford County scope and sequence, and follow those state standards with a balanced and non-biased presentation of social studies, especially with the religious topics. One of the other things has been asked of us is, what are we going to do to assure that for the upcoming year? Each year at the beginning of the school year, we do a lot of ethics trainings and things along that line. We do suicide prevention, about half a dozen different in-services for the teachers at the beginning of the school year. We're also going to add to the beginning of the year, remind the principals, especially our middle-school principals, where this is going to be, to make sure they complete training, and remind their staff of the board policy, the TCA, the Tennessee Code's Annotated State Regulations, and reference some of the things that they're going to be going to this summer. We have a previous board member, not of here, but of other school boards, and actually a minister, going to present, he does this for a living, present to all of our principals, assistant principals, and my instructional staff here, and they'll be given what those are First Amendment rights are. One of the things that we have to remember is, everyone's First Amendment rights don't stop at our school doors, and we have to explain that to everyone and make sure we understand that. Here is what you see far as Tennessee Codes Annotated 49-6-2202. The things that I have highlighted here, it's the duty of the commission to prepare a list of standard editions of textbooks for approval by the State Board of Education for the Use of Public Schools in the state. They generally like to have four or more of those books, and they have said that. The book that's in question was on that. 63% of Middle Tennessee has adopted the Holt-McDougal textbook for sixth grade, and about 50% in the state of Tennessee, I did check on those things. The second part you see there is that they'll strive, and I'm only going to read the highlighted section, they shall strive to recommend textbooks that accurately and comprehensively portray the full range of diversity and achieve, of achievement of racial and ethnic minorities, as well as the role and importance of religion in the history. Here's our current school board policy, and our school board's policies, many of them were rewritten in 2009 to mimic the Tennessee School Board policy, that they had changed, many of the federal laws changed, and things had changed along that line, and state law had changed. So they rewrote theirs, and we had to rewrite many of ours in 2009, and that's why you'll see that January 15, 2009 date for that that was issued. I've highlighted a couple of things. It is essential that the teachers or the teaching about religion and not of religion be conducted in a factual, objective, and respectful manner in accordance with the following guidelines. The first one talks about the use of religion in music, art, literature, drama. The second one speaks to the religious themes in art, literature, history, and it talks about a balanced, comprehensive study of these areas, and such studies should never foster any particular religious tenets or demean any religious beliefs, and that's the one thing that's very important there, and that's in Tennessee school board, as well as demeaning a religion. We just can't do that by law. One of the last points there is that students are free to express religious belief or non-belief in composition, art forms, music, speech, and debate. Next one, please. This is the sixth grade, current sixth-grade social studies standards. Once again, to reiterate, Mr. Odom said, the state sets the standards, Rutherford County sets the curriculum, and that's basically how we teach. This will be for the remainder of this year and the 2013-14 school year. We'll get a new set of standards, and you'll see some draft standards here in just a second for 2014 and 15. Once again, this was for the remainder of this year and next year. The standard 6.1.02, it says, recognize the role of the major religions. Define the religion, describe the beliefs of the world's major religions, identify the founders, and I'm just hitting the highlights. Recognize the world's major religions and their founders, and it talks about, i.e., Judaism, Christianity, Islam, Buddhism, Hinduism, Moses, Jesus, and Muhammad. 6.5.07, it says, recognize the influence of the major religions between both ancient, eastern, and western cultures. And I've got one more highlighted there, B section, it says, compare and contrast elements of Judaism, Christianity, and Islam. Those are our state standards that we have to cover. Here's the draft for the sixth-grade social studies for 2014-15. Once again, this is not next school year, but the year after that. You'll see that there's no reference to Islam in sixth grade at all, and something I've never seen before, if you'll look underneath monotheism, it says, the belief of Jesus as the Messiah and God's Son who redeemed humans from sin, the belief in the Trinity, is one of our standards that we'll have to cover. That's new. The concept of the resurrection, the concept of salvation, the belief in the Old and New Testament, the lives and the teachings, contributions of Jesus and St. Paul, the relationship of early Christians to officials of the Roman Empire.
And I think what he's saying is, I don't know exactly who's serving on the commission that did the draft of this, but we've got some people on it that recognize this and have put it in the draft version for the new standards that will be coming down. I commend them for that.
I've been education for quite some time, and I've never heard the word Trinity mentioned in a standard. That's new. Here's the draft for seventh-grade social studies. Seventh grade has world history and geography, the Middle Ages, and exploration of the Americas. Middle Ages is, or Middle Ages in Islamic World, 400 CE to 1500 is in there. It also talks about, describe the expansion of the Muslim rule through the conquest and the spread of the cultural fusion of Islam and the Arabic languages. It says, trace the origins of Islam and the life and the teachings of Prophet Muhammad, including Islamic teachings on its historical connections to Judaism and Christianity. These are drafts. They have been, I've seen three drafts come through. I believe this one will be very close to what we end up with for 14-15.
Mr. Zago, do you think that it's fair to characterize that the sixth-grade coverage of Christianity, followed by the seventh-grade coverage of this time period, 400 to 1500, is a chronological progression?
I believe so. I believe so. You never can read into the mind of the person that's putting that together, but that would be my opinion as well.
Yes, sir.
We also had some questions about Common Core, and I wanted to make sure you had some information on that. One of our speakers this afternoon actually spoke to who are the creators, or the person that has come together to compile the Common Core state standards. The initiative was set by the National Common Core State Standards, was convened by the National Governors Association, and I want to tell you this, in case you don't know, Tennessee's governor, or Tennessee has a representative, they're one of 12 of the 45 states, I believe, that has a deciding or a voting member on the National Common Core Standards Board. There are only 12, and Tennessee holds one of those voting blocks. The authors were the National Governors Association Center for the Best Practices and the Council of the Chief State School Officers. Once again, and a reminder, I may say this later in here just a second, but Common Core standards cover only two of our subject areas. It's the ELA, which you'll see, ELA, but it's really English Language Arts, it's reading and language, and writing, and the other section is math. Those are the two governing parts of that. Here's a couple of things for the information for the public, in case they want to look at this. I, myself, or if I was talking to my sister and she had some questions, I would say, here's what you need to do. You need to go to the Common Core State Standards website, and I've got the email address there. It's really the TEN Core website. If you go to the Tennessee Department of Education and look at TEN Core, you can get there, and what you can do is actually make public comment on that page as well, and you also can sign up, register your email address to receive immediate updates as things change. If I wanted to have that information, I would be signed up with that, and I do. I have that. The bottom one is another TEN Core website, and it's registration for the PARC assessments. The PARC assessments are one of two assessment companies that are assessing the Common Core standards. PARC and Smarter Balance are the other two, and about 50% of the states are one of the groups, and 50% in the other. But once again, those assessments and the questions that you may be interested in seeing, the types of questions that'll be asked, you can go there and actually look at sample questions, sign up to the PARC website, and they'll give you updates automatically, and you also can make public comment on their things as well. One thing about the social studies draft, I'm sorry, I'll back up just a second. If you'll look at the state website, you can also do that, make comments on the current draft social studies as well. If you're interested in doing that, if you'll go to the state website, if you don't find that, please email me, and I'll send it to you. Once again, National Common Core State Standards, it's math standards, English Language Arts standards. Now, one thing I did put a note on here for was the 26 states, including Tennessee, are participating, developing a set of next-generation site standards. It is totally separate of Common Core. It is the state of Tennessee and 25 other states putting that together.
So as we examine Common Core, it only pertains to English Language Arts and mathematics?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion of Common Core affecting curriculum outside of those two subjects is really kind of inaccurate?
No, sir, it's not. I mean, it's not an accurate state to say it covers anything outside of that, social studies, science, or any other area. It's just mathematics, English, Language Arts, and writing. Here's the PARC website, it's the web, the URL that I gave you earlier, it's just a little copy of their front page. If you go to the standards and start looking at the standards, you can get those draft questions there. Once again, you can sign up there and get automatic updates, and also make public comment on that. Some of the things that you may be thinking about, if you have a student that has accommodations for being either an ELL, an English Language learner, or a special ed student, there's accommodations that are given to them during state standardized tests. They are in the process of drafting those accommodations as well, so if you're interested in reading those accommodations and making public comment on them, I would do that, and I urge you to do that. Here are the, all the states that are in yellow have adopted the Common Core state standards. Once again, those governors have come together and made this adoption. The five states you see there that are not, they have not yet adopted that. Do you have any questions about anything that I've presented you?
One of the questions you said about Common Core, most of us in this room are old enough to remember a nation at risk, which was in 1993, if you remember that report. It sent kind of shockwaves through public education everywhere. What can we do to improve, or what do we need to do to change? So in 1996, the first, the governor associations first began looking at in 1996. And as governors looked at it, there was a number of reasons that they had, why they might want to have more aligned standards. One is textbooks, as we've talked about before, is written for the people who buy the most textbooks. California, Texas, and Florida buy the most, they had the most influence on the textbooks. Sometimes that didn't align with what you were teaching very well when you did that. Second is, we really didn't have a way to compare one state with another. Now, you may not realize this, but under No Child Left Behind, each state created their own standard, and then had to create a test on those standards, and then you had to report to the public, you had to report your English Language Arts, reading, basic and elementary, your math proficiency, and science proficiency, that the, what we used to call the now annual measurable objectives, or the targets, were really only for the reading Language Arts and for the math. What happened is, when 50 states create their own standards, and 50 states create their own test, and this went on for a number of years, what happened is, some states created relatively simple standards, and then followed up with simple tests, and so, and it was such great variability across the country, that when you got a percent that said, 85% of our students are proficient in reading, that was on their standards. It's like measuring, you know, creating your own test for yourself. And so what happened is, there's another assessment, it's called the NAPE, National Assessment of Educational Progress. And so when you hear national reports about, how is the United States compared to Finland or somewhere else, that sort of thing, that's probably one of the most quoted statistics. Well, if you remember, Governor Bredesen said, Tennessee was reporting about 85 or 90% proficiency rates, and NAPE report came out and says, nope, Tennessee, you're about 35% proficient. And he said, that's not truth and advertising. And so what's led to a lot of this development of Common Core and the governors, and he was speaking as a governor, is, we've got to do something so that we have more commonality, so that we can actually compare and look at scores. So, the original intent of Common Core was to try to get those standards for some of those reasons that I mentioned. The thing we need to remember is, it is not what you teach, it is a standard that we're going to say, and one of the things in education that's important, kids move around in this country, you know, we go from one place to the other. It would really be nice if a student that was in third grade in Kentucky or Illinois came to Tennessee in the fourth grade, that you knew that step of their scaffold had kind of been covered. And so with a common set of standards, where, and it says, in third grade, we want our kids to know this information, fourth grade, this information, that you begin that scaffold of building those students on up, and so, as students transfer, you won't have as much gap that you might have in it. But every state is still absolutely free to choose what curriculum they do between the state and the local school system. When you see that standard, how are you going to teach it, and how are you not going to teach it? Again, the PARC assessment, the reason for the PARC assessment, I mean, it's two-fold. One is, so you can compare one state to another. Tennessee is part of Smarter Balance, and Mr. Zago said is the other. So when we give the PARC assessment, if we come out 40% or so, and it's a more difficult test, the questions, if you'll look at the sample questions, you'll agree with me, it's more difficult test. Kentucky was probably one of the first in the nation to give it, they gave it last year, and their scores dropped relatively half. I don't think it was a standard, I think it was a question. And I, you know, we shared with you one night, do you remember when somebody came with you and gave you the third-grade math problem, you know, in doing that? And if people go in and go to the PARC site and look at the questions, you'll quickly see the difficulty of the question level that we're talking about. So, it's going to give you some of that comparison, and then we're going to need to learn from states who may be doing better than we are. You know, what are you doing, what materials, what are you, how are you teaching that produces higher performance than maybe Tennessee is doing? produces higher performance than maybe Tennessee is doing? So the part as a director of school and probably curriculum and instruction is the ability to compare ourselves with somebody else, to look at students who might have the same stepping stones being built as they move across the country, and then look at somebody who might be doing it pretty well and try to steal ideas from them and see what they're doing. So it's not hidden. I mean, it's on those websites. The money, Viakas talked about, where did the money come from? And the piece that's gotten the most attention is, with some of the race to the top money, they received money furnished to PARC and Smarter Balance to create the test. Now, another thing about that, under the old No Child Left Behind segment was, every state, you had to test under No Child Left Behind, so every state went to a testing company, and that was the best place to get stock, was an educational testing service, and Pearson, some of the others, because every state had to create fifty tests. So by creating more of a common assessment that's used in a number of states together, about twenty-three, twenty-four, something like it on PARC, then the cost of purchasing those tests and putting it together can be shared, every state, each one of those states not going to have to pay for another development test themselves, they can share in the cost of that test. But all of the requirements to report back to parents, to report back to the public about how your students are doing, your advantage will be, you're going to be able to look and see how you do compared to everybody else. But all of that is there. Now, there may be hidden agendas I do not know about, but I can say it's been open from everything I've seen so far, as much as I can say. So the money piece, I think the Gates Foundation furnished some, but Bill and Melinda Gates have been known to furnish through educational initiatives quite a bit, did some in Memphis with teacher evaluation and other things like that. So that has not been uncommon for certain philanthropic organizations have done that over time. But anyway, we'd be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have, that we can answer at this time.
I wanted to say, I had four more points that you reminded me of. When Mr. Odom was speaking of how it was so different under No Child Left Behind with, before Tennessee got the waiver to No Child Left Behind, No Child Left Behind's still law. We just have a waiver to have our own plan, an individual plan that was written strictly by Tennessee. But it was so different. Also, under No Child Left Behind, we had to highly qualified teachers decide what a highly qualified teacher was. The state of Illinois highly qualified their teachers by if they have a teaching license, they're highly qualified. Tennessee, you had to go through almost two hundred additional hours of professional development to become highly qualified. That's the differences you saw under the strict No Child Left Behind. Mr. Odom also alluded to the fact of the contracting with various companies for tests or testing materials for the end of the year or the cumulative test that we would have at the end of the year. We had Pearson, we had all kinds of companies out there. They would write test questions differently. Some of the test questions were softball questions, and some of them were very fast pitched. So you had a big difference there. One of the things I wanted to remind everybody, especially the public, about Kentucky's drop once they assessed at the Common Core, that's very, that is very typical of any standards change. If you'll look on the state website, where they still have a disclaimer, where we changed our standards about four years ago, they actually dropped all the reporting information from prior to that. There's still a disclaimer there about that. Anytime a school system or a state adopts a new set of standards, and we give that test for the first time, we call it the J, the J drop or the J loss. Students will drop off, and that very next year they start back up with a higher performance. It's just because it's unknown to all of us. Additional requirements also Mr. Odom alluded to, which if I was a parent, I'd love with some of the Common Core and the new RTI, Response Intervention Laws, things that are Tennessee's doing, it mandates communication and requirement for notifying parents in that bottom five percent and bottom fifteen percent of performance levels, and it mandates what we do as far as interventions and direct intervention. And if we move a child from one intervention to the next, it also mandates us notifying parents of that. So it requires more communication with parents. Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to make one comment. I mean, standards have been scary philosophically, certainly is a concern for teachers. It's been the subject of a lot of different things. But I just want to remind everybody, and I'm going to use Mr. Zago here. Mr. Zago was in my sixth grade class about the mid nineteen seventies. Mr. Zachary across the hall, and Mr. Tackett on this side of the hall, we had standards. But they were, they were unknown to each other. One of them was better. I don't know if his were better than mine or vice versa, but the point would be that we've always taught the standards. A teacher was, at that point in time though, basically in charge of deciding what those standards were with some guidance from the system. But we've always had standards, and it was said, and I think this is accurate, that Massachusetts, the state that has led the nation in education forever, going all the way back to Boston and their laws and so forth, that actually the...
They adopted these in two thousand and ten as their state standard.
Well, the standard before, when NAPE came along, that the standards for tenth grade students in Tennessee were actually lower than the standard for sixth grade students in Massachusetts. And that's scary for us, something, you know, it says, we were watered down, and that truth and advertising was saying, but we've sure made a test that we could all pass, because I can make a test that nobody can pass, and I can make a test that everybody, everybody can pass. It's just how difficult you want to ask those questions. So we did not have strong standards, but we were asking easy questions to make us look better than we really were.
Right. And one more example you brought to mind is graduation rate, and it was mentioned tonight as well. All the states had their own way of determining what a student was to graduate. Mr. Odom earlier said it was a four years in that one summer, and those things dropped back. Every state, some states had five years in one summer, and they called them a graduate. They also determined different kinds of diplomas, being a graduating diploma, if you had a GED, you were a graduate. Here in the state of Tennessee, a GED is not a graduate or considered a graduate within that group. We were comparing apples, oranges, and pears for the past four, five years, or ten years, Tennessee was always in the bottom five, bottom ten in graduating. Once those same set of standards were mandated across for graduation through this process, our state became in the top five. I wanted to say, Mr. Odom, you may correct me if I'm wrong, we were fourth in the nation at the graduation rate.
We were one of the highest growths of anybody in the nation.
Right. We went from the bottom five, like number forty-six, to number four, once everybody was using the same criteria.
Anybody else? I'd like to just say, Mr. Zago, Mr. Odom, I appreciate you bringing this update to everyone, and it certainly helped me a little bit understand a little bit better, too. At this time, we'll go to number seventeen, general discussion by board members. Any board members have any thing they want to discuss?
If I could just kind of follow up on some of those comments to the group that's here. We agree on a lot more, I think sometimes we might, we agree that we want the best for our kids, for sure. We agree that the federals, legislatures, and state legislatures are bringing things down to us at the local level, that we are troublesome, just say it that way. But we as a board, for sure, are a group that have followed law. We have been very proactive, Mr. Blair with his leadership in particular, about letting our state legislature know and our national legislatures know that we're not in agreement with everything that takes place. There's a lot of things that trouble us and that are putting some shackles on what we would like to do. And we can all agree that there's lots of folks in this country that are here to bring even to what's going on, and that's very unfortunate. It's the innocence that our children do not get to enjoy that I had of traveling the neighborhoods with the peace of mind. It's a different time, and we can all agree with that. What we may not agree with is the decisions that are made. We were elected to make decisions, that's what we'll have to do. We won't always make decisions that everybody happened to agree with. I do have to question that I disagree very strongly, that our teachers don't care as much as they used to. I think teachers do care at a very high level, and I want to make sure that that point is made, that we have a staff that out there, under very trying times, are doing things, I think, in their best interest of kids. And third, we're not going to agree on my motives. My motives are pure. You may not agree with my decision, but I tell you, I do care about what takes place. My resolve is there. I don't know anyone from the Muslim religion, if I do, that unbeknownst to me, I certainly haven't been coerced by anybody to do anything. I've got, and I've stated this, and I'll state it again, and I'll be quiet, I have a granddaughter that's in fourth grade, and she'll be going through the sixth grade curriculum. I've reviewed it, I've looked at it. That's the purest test that I can give. I have no issue with my granddaughter going through the curriculum that we present here in Rutherford County Schools. So with that said, I would love to talk one-on-one. I think that's the way you get things taken care of as opposed to, you know, the math kind of thing. We may not agree, but I can at least explain my position, and I'm certainly willing to do that.
Blair?
I'd like to, again, thank those who come and speak at these board meetings. It is not always an easy thing to do. The pressure of the spotlight, the examination of your words, and being put on the spot is not what everybody signs up for. So thank you again for those who would come and speak and share those concerns. There are times when you bring things to light that need to be brought to light. I think while the events of the previous board meeting may not have gone extremely well, the outcome tonight and the information that has been shared not only with the board, but with the general public, is something that is more positive than negative. I think we're moving in the right direction. To that end, I draw upon the comments, allow us to help you from the public. That is an encouraging word. What can we do better? That is an encouraging word. When we work together, we will continue to provide to Rutherford County the exemplary education that we are being lauded for. Because Rutherford County schools are doing such an excellent job, energy efficiency, certainly in curriculum and test-taking, and in leadership from Mr. Odom, we have the opportunity to send Mr. Blair not just to Nashville to influence our state legislators, but also to Washington to influence this process. We have one of the few seats of influence as this moves forward. We need your input so that we reflect our community in those seats of influence. You share that input by attending these board meetings and discussing these things with us, and for that, I thank you.
Blair?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the effort that Mr. Odom and Mr. Zago have made to present, meet, you know, to basically paint a picture of what we're trying to accomplish here in our education district. And I thank you for your due diligence and the effort to share with our community, and of course, with us as the board. So I would just like to commend both you and Mr. Zago for a very good job.
Anybody else? Ms. Michael, once, next meeting.
May the fifteenth, yeah, a bunch of meetings on May the seventh.
Okay.
Chairman, could I make one other comment?
Yes.
Just that board meetings change from time to time based on whatever, maybe a county commission issue that we need to be involved in, or maybe some conference that maybe a board member needs to attend. So it is not unusual for us to do a Tuesday, Wednesday, or maybe a Wednesday, Thursday, or in this case, Monday, Tuesday. So, you know, if the public is wondering about that, if you'll look back over our schedule over the last several years, board meetings do change. Most of the time, they're work session on Tuesday, board meeting on Thursday, but that is not etched in stone. So that, those meetings do change.
Anybody else? Nothing else here, but May the seventh, we're done.